In with an opening prayer and Mariette, I will get you to lead us, please.
Welcome, everyone. It's good to be with you this evening. I'm going to begin with a very, very simple prayer tonight, and I'd like to invite us to start in silence. We're all very aware of the challenges facing our world right now. We have the COVID virus that's moving in ways and places that we can't seem to manage entirely. We have the tragedy that seems to increase in Nova Scotia and the overwhelming sadness that that province is experiencing. We're on the eve of Earth Day as we ponder our choices and the consequences as it impacts our mother earth. And we remember the needs of our local community, the homeless, those who are struggling. So as we begin, we just pause and rest in silence for a short bit. And we continue in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord of Light and Love, ignite hope within us as we move through this Easter season. May we share hope to those in despair. May we share joy to those who need relief from their pain. May we share light to those trapped in darkness. Risen Lord, roll away our stones of fear that we may boldly step forward to serve in this time of need. Bless our meeting, share your wisdom with us, and help us to serve your people as best as we can. And we ask this in the name of Jesus, our risen Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Mariette. Moving on, the agenda is a roll call. I'll just call out the trustees. Trustee Frank.
Present.
Present. Trustee Vaughn.
Present.
Trustee Mike.
Present.
Trustee Paul. Trustee Paul Landry.
Here.
Trustee Anthony.
Present.
And trustee Jeff White.
Present.
Okay, and trustee Claire.
Present.
And student trustee Julia.
Present.
Great, so all trustees are present. With us tonight, we have media. I believe Ricky's here. I just want to say welcome. Is anyone else here from the media? Hey, so welcome Ricky. So now we'll go down to declarations of pecuniary interest. Are there any?
Madam Chair, with respect to item 10.7, I declare a kinder interest in my fact, my daughter is an employee of the board.
Okay, thank you Frank for that. I have that written. We'll get you to be excused when we get to that. Thanks. Okay, so number five, consideration and approval of the agenda. May I have the recommendation, please, Trina?
That the agenda be approved as presented.
Moved by.
Vaughn.
Vaughn, seconded by.
I'll second that, Paul.
Paul Landry. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries. Number six, on the agenda, the confirmation of the minutes, the recommendation on page one, please, Trina.
That the minutes of the meeting of the Canora Catholic District School Board of February 18, 2020 be approved as circulated.
Moved by.
Frank.
Also moved.
Frank, seconded by Mike Favreau. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries. And next one, please, Trina.
That the minutes of the special board meeting of the Canora Catholic District School Board of April 7, 2020 be approved as circulated.
Moved by.
Anne.
Anne Sweeney, seconded by.
Vaughn.
Vaughn, blah. All, any opposed? Hearing none, that carries. Okay, so under number seven, we have nothing, but then we get on to number eight, the delegations and presentations. So 8.1, Canora Youth Wellness Hub Educational Partnership. I have Victoria Swayda and Jackie Frank. I will let you take over, please.
Thank you. Jackie Frank, who you'll be seeing and meeting very shortly, Jeff Richards, who is also out there in cyberspace, and I are very excited to speak about a new partnership that has been established between the Canora Catholic District School Board and the Canora Youth Wellness Hub. The partnership actually began as an idea that our director had, and because he is so dedicated to and passionate about the initiative, to begin our presentation tonight, I just wanted to ask Derek if he would kindly please relay how and why the idea developed.
Certainly. Thank you, Victoria. I know it's been a topic of conversation for a while, both at the trustee table and definitely at the board, and alternative education is something that is near and dear to everyone's hearts. Although many options have been provided at St. Thomas Aquinas High School for, ever since it's existed, some students do learn differently and are in different places. And Paul White and Victoria have done some fine work in reaching out, as do our, as do the rest of our staff, to our students who are most vulnerable for a variety of reasons, and reasons that aren't of their control, over their control or their fault. And so, when the youth hub was announced, Jackie Frank immediately was so receptive to a partnership. And the partnership, of course, involved students who weren't part of any educational system. Jackie will likely note that we are, of all the hubs in Ontario, this youth hub was the first to bring on a full education partner, and I'm sure that will be part of the, of the presentation. So we are very proud to look after some of these needs that have been, this has been long needed, particularly in alternative education, but also in continuing education, is through the support of our local ministry office, we can also serve students who are over 21, and help support those students with their educational and employment goals. So we're very proud, and I can't commend Paul White enough for his passion and his outreach. Victoria, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Sue Devlin, who sits on the, on the, on the board at the youth hub. Of course, our partners, and Jackie represents so many of those partners. And our receptive partners also, we never exclude our students, too, who have been helping advise through the Youth Wellness Hub, because there's a youth advisory, a strong youth advisory presence there, too. So we're, again, very proud, very proud of the work that folks have continued. We thank Jeff Richards for coming on. He's been such a passionate advocate, and has indeed, the whole staff of Canora Catholic have been so welcome this with open arms. And I'd have to mention the OPP. There's so many other community partners who have been involved in helping get this off the ground and are committed to this Canora Youth Wellness Hub KCDSB Education Advisor position being as successful as it can be. So thank you so much, Victoria. I'll turn it back over to you through you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So the partnership did take several months to plan for and come to its fruition. Jackie, Jeff and I are now going to provide an overview of the hub and the details of the Education Advisor position. Jackie is going to be speaking to the first few slides of our PowerPoint, and I'm going to be working the transitions between slides, so please forgive us if there are any glitches in our presentation, technological glitches. Before we start, I just want to make sure, can everybody see the first slide?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so it gives me great pleasure to hand it over to Jackie Frank, who is the manager of the Canora Youth Wellness Hub. So, welcome, Jackie.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much, Victoria and Derek. Derek, I think you painted a perfect picture for how this partnership came to fruition, and I definitely have to give a round of applause, myself, for Derek for being so just motivated to get this program up and running. I think we had been moved into our site maybe a couple weeks, and I had a phone call that morning from Derek asking if we could meet to discuss a partnership to get this service operating in the hub. So it's just, it's really appreciated to have the partners across the community reach out to us and offer their services, because the intention of the Youth Wellness Hub, which I'll get to, is to provide that wraparound support, and the KCDSB Education Advisor really, really complements that well. So I will move on to the next slide here, Victoria.
Okay. There you go, lift it up.
I think there's just a little lag as we tested last time, so I'll give it a couple of seconds here.
Victoria, do you have the presentation in full screen right now?
I do.
Ooh, we don't see that. Can you take it out of presentation mode?
Sure.
And if you go to the second slide.
Okay, just a sec, second slide, yep.
I think you'd have to switch the way you're sharing your screen in order for you to watch it in full screen mode. You'd have to do a desktop share instead of just the window.
Okay.
Victoria, this works perfectly as well, though. If you want to proceed, we can see the second slide, and I think this is great.
Okay. Thanks, Jackie. Are you okay? Can you see it?
Yeah, no, that's, that's totally great. So the, a little bit of history on the Youth Wellness Hub. Back in October 2017, there was an announcement, or a call out, I should say, for communities to apply for this integrated youth service center that's going to provide wraparound support in communities across the province. So Canora members, agencies, organizations, youth, family members, all came together and were able to put together a really great application that outlined the needs of young people in our region. And out of over 50 communities that had applied for a Youth Wellness Hub, Canora was one of 10 that were selected. So it's a really big deal for our community to have the funding for this. And I think it's also notable that we're the only hub in northwestern Ontario as well. So we're kind of leading the way for the north a little bit in terms of what services look for us compared to southern Ontario, because we know that that's really different as well. And so we opened our doors in November 2019 for a soft launch of services. It's located downtown. We really put a lot of thought into what the location was going to be for the Youth Wellness Hub. We knew it needed to be accessible, had sidewalks so that young people could walk there, transit needed to be available close by. And for me, the biggest thing is there's visibility. We're seeing, as much as we just have a little sign right now, which you can see in the window, eventually we will have a large, a large sign and a more renovated outer space that will catch the eye of young people that are walking or driving by and know that there's support available for them. So I think that's a really important piece. And so right now, within our soft launch, we're doing a Monday to Thursday operation, and there's just a typo on the slide. It's 12 to 6 that we're open, so that we cover that after-school hours for the mental health services, but the 12:30 to 3:30 is the Education Advisor hours. And we'll move on to the next slide here. So a Youth Wellness Hub is a place where any young person ages 12 to 25 can walk through the doors and access a variety of services, whether that's mental health and addictions counseling, primary care, employment, education, sexual health services, they can, and all the others that you see on that list there as well, they can access those services in a low-barrier way. So what we and the Youth Wellness Hub product as a whole has identified as low barrier is no appointment necessary. So that's that walk-in model, and in a youth-friendly space. So if you've ever been to our Youth Wellness Hub, or if you ever come by, you'll see that it's very casual. There's couches and a shag rug and bright colors, and the furniture is all very welcoming. And then we have staff that are youth navigators who welcome youth in a non-confrontational way, and we meet young people where they're at to address any of the needs that they might have. So there is a long list of service providers that are involved, that have partnered to get the Youth Wellness Hub up and running and continue as partners to operate the site. Everything from the mental health sector to healthcare, to education, employment, recreation, cultural services, there's a really long list there, so I won't read them all off, but KCDSB is one of our partners that has been a supporter and a partner of the Youth Wellness Hub since the inception of it. So we're really grateful to have the school board involved, because we know that education is a huge component in wellness for young people.
Thank you, Jackie. I'll move into the Education Advisor position. So Jeff Richards was hired in early February and officially started at the hub on February the 18th. His mandate is listed there in the, on the green side of that chart. He is to provide education support services to youth in Canora who are at risk with the primary goal of encouraging them and helping them to return to or remain in school. And there are certain stipulations around that, their involvement. They have typically demonstrated an inability to attend a regular school program for various reasons. They may be at risk of not completing their secondary school diploma, or they may have experienced interruptions in their education because they have undergone treatment, or have certain legal issues that have led to some impediments in their education along the way. His mandate, his methods are to help youth to understand what's out there with regard to educational services, to co-plan with youth any of the pathways that they're interested in, whether that's working, going straight into work after getting their high school diploma, or continuing on with their education, helping them to achieve credits so that they can get an Ontario Secondary School diploma or certificate, helping them with their high school courses, assisting, like, helping them with their reach outs to get additional assistance in that way, and accessing different ways to, for them to reach their goals, whether it's through a GED program, or an adult ed program, or any of our access programs that are available in the area. With the soft launch of the hub, when it, in its beginning months, Jeff was actually available to the students on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday from 12:35 to 3 o'clock. Since April 1st, the hub's hours had intended to be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, but we know that we've had a little bit of a hiccup there with everything going on in our society right now. Jeff still actually teaches at TA halftime in the mornings. He is teaching our leadership course, and he also still serves as the athletic director for TA during the afternoons, when Jeff was not in the hub, so for, obviously, on that Friday afternoon. He was busy creating an awareness of the program by meeting with other supports, such as KCA youth outreach workers, and the directors of local child protection agencies, to help with the referral process and familiarity with what the program offers to our at-risk youth. And he also networked with, and continues to, network with available community resources like LEAP to help with supporting students. Jeff has also been creating documentation, including an information sheet about the Education Advisor position for the hub and a registration form. Jeff, did you want to add anything? I know you're out there listening. I just don't know if you want to jump in and add.
Hi, thanks, Victoria. I don't have a whole lot to add. You and Jackie really covered pretty much everything there is for the job. Just, I've reached out to a few of the agencies, like Abinugie through Sean Spencer, and they've started to put together education plans for their students. So hopefully, we'll see a few more students or traffic come through, and KCA is on the same page as them. So they're all building and slowly, and it's just a, it's a new thing. So it's coming, and we're building and getting more and more students as we go. I mean, the COVID thing's definitely restricted access to the location, but tomorrow Jackie and I and our other advisors are going to meet and plan the whole technology online version of what the hub will look like. And I think with them accepting phone calls from the youth and still giving them the access to all the, what's available there, they will be, they'll be able to access counseling as well as education, and we can hopefully make it somewhat, switch over from being in person to online and get some credits for some kids. So it's a very positive, and I'm very happy to be a part of it. Thanks, Victoria.
Thanks, Jeff. And you can see the referral process for our youth, area youth to access, Jeff, through, they can do self-referrals, individual or family. Referrals may be made through schools, agencies, and also, all of the youths that enter the youth hub do go through an intake process, and at that stage, it might also be noted that education is something that they're interested in pursuing. So that concludes our presentation. I would really very much like to thank you, thank Derek and Jackie and Jeff for co-presenting and helping to put this together, and we would welcome any comments or questions from our listeners.
Trustees, do you have any questions for Victoria? Or Jackie?
Frank, just kudos on a great start and looking forward to a very successful program from here on in. Hopefully, we get through this COVID crisis and we can start doing things in person.
Yeah, I know that, you know, initially, it definitely was an impediment, but I know that the youth hub is working hard to navigate through these uncharted territories to make sure that our youth are still able to access the program.
Good.
Perfect. Anne?
Anne.
Hi, hi, Vicky. I'm just wondering about young people who are displaced from their homes, or really don't have secure, a secure, safe place to live. I didn't notice that there was any, anything within the program that would give them direction.
That's a really good question, Anne. So housing is one of the, if you will, pillars of the needs identified across the province for young people. We know a lot of the times, people under 18 are falling out of that. They kind of, there's a gap there, right, for young people who are displaced. There's no shelter available for them, and it's, housing programs typically are for people 18 plus. So it's definitely something that we, we are mindful of and something that we do see, unfortunately. So one of the services that has come in handy and has played a role for housing is our Youth Navigation Service. So what that is, is a young person comes in and they can talk to one of our youth navigators, and just talk about their situation and what resources are available. So we had someone call the other day, and they were asking about food security, for example. They are housed, but it's, it's not stable. So we were able to connect them with the food bank and get a food hamper for them. So it's, it's those connection pieces that are really important, because we know even as adults, navigating our system is really tough. So just having like a open, welcoming person to talk to, to help navigate through the difficulties of whether it's going on Kijiji to find an apartment with somebody, you know, getting on the KDSB housing list, there are things that can be done, just if there's someone to support a young person. So that's been, at least for us, the critical step that we see has been helpful.
Good, good. Thanks, Jessica.
No problem.
Was there any other questions, trustees?
I would just like to make a comment. It's a great service for the youth, and very well-needed. And it's, it's nice to see that there's a chance that youth won't fall into cracks, if you know what I mean. Like, it's, it's helping them, it's supporting them, and it's good for Canora. I'm glad to see that's happening.
Thank you. We appreciate the support.
Great.
Can I just say something? Yeah, this, this youth hub reminds me of my community. We had a youth center. Unfortunately, it was shut down and renovated and turned into office space, and our community doesn't have a youth center anymore. We don't know where they hang out now. This, I think, is a very, you know, useful tool. It'll get youth coming in, and once they do come in, that's, they can either fall through the cracks, or they can, they can get the answers they, they're looking for, the help they're looking for, coming to a place like this. So it's, it's a very good service. I mean, I drive past it all the time, and I wonder about it, and, you know, meeting you guys here, even if it's online, I think I'll stop in. But yeah, once, once somebody comes for help and they don't get it, very unlikely they won't come back. So I think we should be aware that once somebody comes into the door, that's an opportunity for us, for you guys, to, you know, reach out, because they're, you know, they're not going to come in and tell you, hey, all this and all that, and everything's going on. They're, they're going to come in a little, you know, maybe shy, reluctant, or hesitant even, but once they see the smiles, you know, what, what it's all about, and that you guys are there to help, that it's, it's a very good service. And I've, I've had a couple of young, young men tell me that that's where they were, and, you know, I didn't think nothing to ask them, other than, you know, that that's where they were hanging out. So very good. Good job, guys.
Thank you. That's really great feedback. I appreciate that.
Jackie, when the hub is actually able to physically open again, you are open to having people, if any of the trustees wanted to pop by for a tour and to see it, that's, that's okay?
Absolutely. Anytime that we're open, we have people stopping by almost every day for tours. So definitely stop by.
It's an awesome place to see, the way that it's been even decorated, set up. It's very welcoming for our youth, and there's so many things being offered for them.
Just maybe, just an FYI, the cultural coordinators over at the Canora Chiefs Advisor, as well as the Windhack Services, have very knowledgeable people. If you guys ever feel the need to utilize them, you know, they're, they're a phone call away, so, you know, they'll, they can help also, you know.
Yeah.
I like hearing you guys are, all the other services.
Roy Tom does Anishinaabe Ma'wan at the hub every other Tuesday in the evenings. So he's been, he's been a really great support. Yeah.
Are you guys allowed to, I guess you guys aren't allowed to smudge, right?
No, we are. We are allowed. Canora Chiefs owns the building, and that was definitely a requirement when we were doing the renovations. We smudge pretty much every day at the hub. So, yeah. Cool.
Great.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
I just, again, like to commend Jackie and your staff for being so open-minded to this partnership. As mentioned, I believe, Jackie, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you're the only youth hub. As mentioned, I believe, Jackie, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you're the only youth hub that has a fully participating education partner at this point. And I, and I realize that you've had other, other supervisors at youth hubs reach out to you and find out, okay, what's going on? And I just commend you and your staff for that. And I'd be remiss, again, there's many others. Paul White had tremendous vision in moving forward with this. He still is working very hard to ensure that everyone's pathway is recognized. And I know Victoria and Jeff and Jackie, you all share that because everybody does walk a different path. And our common creator has told us in various ways that we are not to judge someone else's path and we are to value other others paths. And whether a student is working towards an Ontario secondary school diploma or wishes to go directly into the world of work or honors traditional ways of living. And this is where I know Paul White and Shelley and others are working so hard right now. Treaty III, the Individual First Nations, or Métis Brothers and Sisters are working so hard to look at traditional ways as an equally viable pathway. Because it is, it's just, it's not that it isn't equally viable, it's not always recognized as such. And so we're looking forward to further partnership. And again, I commend Jeff for his flexibility because he's the face of education at the youth advisor, at the youth hub. And and he's really stepped out. Like I know he's always had an affinity for our students in alternative education, but he's really stepping out of the role and really looking at what students need. And I commend Victoria also because it's not the director or the superintendent that's mentioned in the Education Act, it's the principal. And Victoria is responsible for the granting of credits and for getting students formally on roster. And and she's also demonstrated such amazing flexibility for recognizing all those pathways. Because I know Victoria is very passionate about this also. So we continue to look forward to the dialogue and hearing more from our students, from our youth, because they're the ones that are really guiding this and telling us, hey, excuse me for everybody. I'll just use me as an example, hey, dummy, this is what we need. Can you kind of help us get what we need here? And that's, in essence, that's what this is all about, listening to our youth because they know what's needed. And it's not that they have failed, it's that we have failed to recognize them and their gifts in our institutions. And I think this is a really groundbreaking way in which we can really honor the pathway, the individual pathways that different people have, particularly our young people, and honor them by saying, okay, we're going to help you walk that path. And so thank you, Jackie and your staff, Victoria, thank you Travis and Kylie and all of your staff, Jeff, Paul, Sue Devlin, who's on there, and all of our community partners for working so hard to already have this make such an impact to, right now, between 100 and 400 students who are not in our formal education systems right now. So anyway, commendations and thank you for the trustees for their vision in supporting this all along because this would not have happened without the blessing of the Board of Trustees. So thank you and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I see there's a lot of passion out there for the youth hub, which is really great. I'd like to thank you, Victoria, Jackie and Jeff for taking time this evening to let us know all about the Wellness Hub for youth. Thanks. Okay, we will move on down to eight point two, the Student Journalism Program. Grace and Cheryl.
All right, awesome. So I'm going to start things off. I am Grace Dunford, the Community Relations Lead for the Kenora Catholic District School Board. And we are super excited about this Student Journalism Program, which started this fall, so the fall of 2019. So it was an idea that we actually kind of had when Trina and I had gone to a communications meeting down south. And they run a similar program in one of the school boards, but they have multiple high schools. So it's voluntary, students volunteer and they're a part of the program. So we, when we heard about it, we thought, oh, that's such a, such a neat idea. What a great way to get students involved in the community and in journalism, which is something that I'm super passionate about. So how can we make this work here? So I had approached Cheryl, who has actually, she'd spoken to me in the past about, you know, trying to get something together. And either the timing wasn't right or we just, at the time, couldn't kind of think of how to do that. So I approached her to see if she thought it would be possible. Unfortunately, she was super enthusiastic and willing to sit down with me and we kind of figured out a way to make it part of the curriculum, which was really exciting. So I get to act as the chase producer. I go into the classes and do two initial presentations over two class, kind of like a Journalism 101. So I try and teach them two classes, what took me four years of university education to learn. So obviously there's a pretty steep learning curve, but we're, we're perfectly okay with that. And it's really fun to work with the students and see the kind of work that they are producing. And so far, it's been, it's been really, really neat to see. And then we're lucky that the Kenora Minor News and Q104 were generous enough to partner with us. And so we will send them the finished pieces of the students and they will publish it. So the Kenora Minor News has put it in the newspaper and then Q104 will put it either in the news or the blog. And then the exciting part is that that student then gets to go on the radio, which is really exciting. And the parents usually get really, really pumped to hear their kid on the radio. And it's, it's a lot of, it's a, it's a great moment of pride for both the students and their families. So yeah, I'm going to pass it over to Cheryl now and she's going to kind of talk about how she was able to make this a part of the curriculum.
All right, yeah, it's, it's been a really fantastic program. Grace and I did start talking about like many years ago, I think, Grace, when you were still working at Q104 at the time, we started dancing around this idea of how we could get students doing some journalism pieces. So what I love so much about this project for the Grade 12 course is that it really is a really hands, well, hands-on way of teaching students about audience and purpose. So just to put that in perspective for you, one of the things I have to teach students is how to use appropriate language and form for their audience and for the given purpose. And so the way I like to explain it to my class is that, you know, if I want to teach about why the sky is blue, I, if I'm teaching that to a Grade 12 physics class, my presentation would look one way. And if I was teaching that to a kindergarten class, my presentation would look entirely different if I was trying to effectively communicate my message. And that's sometimes hard for kids to really understand in other contexts. And this project really gives them that opportunity because they have a very real life audience that they are looking to communicate with and they have a very definitive purpose about, you know, sharing the news and events of the day. So it's a really practical approach to teaching that really key idea. It's also a really interesting way to, to help them differentiate between the difference of fact and opinion and the language that you would need to use for each, you know, when you're trying to convey information versus when you're trying to be persuasive. And it's a really great learning opportunity for students to see the impact of language in that way and, and use it in those different ways as well. I love this piece especially for how it teaches students the importance of editing and revision in a very real context because they see that it's going to be published and, you know, typos aren't appropriate and spelling errors aren't appropriate. And, you know, it really puts on them the onus to hand in a perfectly written piece in a way that maybe they might slack otherwise and that, oh, it's okay this time on some other pieces. So, so those are some of the really great things I love about it. It has shown our students the importance of seeking out quality sources and recognizing bias in sources as well. And so seeking out interviews that are going to give them a well-rounded approach to a topic or an event and asking really good questions and really being aware of the inherent vested interests of each of the sources that they're talking to. Again, really fabulous skill to go out into the world with and being able to, you know, use that in, in a real life context. And lastly, and, and very important as well, is how it teaches oral language skills. So they have to learn how to do interviews. They have to be confident enough to approach someone and, you know, come up with questions and initiate conversation and follow up questions. And for some kids, it really pushes them out of their comfort zone in a way that maybe they haven't been challenged before. And so that's been a really great learning opportunity for them as well. So in addition to all of those things, this project has also given students a very valuable real life experience, both with working with deadlines, which can be challenging in a school setting. You know, we have the Growing Success Document and we have lots of, lots of flexibility built in in a lot of ways. But for students, they might never have hit a really like hard deadline like this before. And it really, I think, prepares them well for what's to come in university and in work experiences. It gives them an employer that they're answering to, both Grace and the media, that they are accountable, have to be accountable to. And lastly, certainly very close to my heart, it really, it gives them the opportunity to be published, which is a goal for many aspiring writers. And I love that we're able to provide this opportunity for our students in this setting. I think that it is such, it has been such a great moment of pride for many of the students to see their piece in writing and to know that at this age, they're this published writer and be able to just sort of sit with that in their community in terms of that sense of pride. So those are some of the ways that I've really been able to incorporate it in terms of a curriculum aspect with the students and have gotten some really fantastic feedback from students about particularly those areas of the course. Hand it back to you, Grace.
Awesome, so just briefly explain kind of how it works in the actual deadline assignment sense. So as I said, we start, I start each semester, I come in and teach a crash course on journalism. I'll go through news and what is news and fake news, fake news and writing a lead and all of that kind of stuff in two classes. And then what happens after that is Cheryl and I sit down and come up with a list of events or topics that the students can cover. So last semester, what we had was we had two topics per month. And the students drew numbers to see who got to pick first and then they chose which topics they were going to cover. So each event or topic had about three, three students that were directly competing with each other to write the best piece. So they had to, they would sit down with me, the, the assignment would open on a certain date. They had one day to kind of brainstorm ideas and what they wanted to do with that topic. And then they would sit down with me and talk about the ideas that they had. And I would say, yeah, that's a great idea or, you know, maybe that's been done before, let's try and look at a different angle. We also talk about interviews, who they wanted, pardon me, who they wanted to interview. And if they needed some help with some suggestions, then I would do that as well. Or if they wanted to interview someone that maybe they needed help connecting with, then I would help them connect with that person as well. And then after that, it was up to them, they had the next, they had about a week from start to finish when they had to hand in the finished piece. And they had to do the interviews, they had to go to the event, if it was an event, and then submit the finished piece to Cheryl and I. And then we would go through all the students' pieces and we would pick a winner. And that student's piece would be passed on to the media. So just some examples of some of the things we've covered, we did Orange Shirt Day, Mental Health Month, Rock Your Mox, Rowan's Law Day, the Early Years Arts Festival, and a number of other topics. So we really tried to pick a range so that there was going to be at least a couple of things that students would be interested and actually want to write about and want to interview sources for. And it's, it's been really impressive. Some of the stuff that, some of the stories that we have gotten back have been fantastic. I remember there was one student who their lead was so good, I checked to see if it was plagiarized. Because I thought, oh my gosh, it took me a year to learn how to write a lead and you just wrote this perfect lead in a week. So that's been really exciting to see is just the, and the, and the, the passion from some of the students that you don't really expect. You know, these are quieter students and you're not really sure if they're going to take on the assignment and, and do a good job. And they surprise you and sometimes come up with the best articles. So I've just been having a lot of fun being a part of this. And yes, I think it's just a really fantastic opportunity. I would have loved something like this when I was in high school. So I'm excited to be a part of it and, and keep it going for as long as possible. So yeah, that is, that is it. We'll now ask, answer any questions or anything else.
Can I just interject, please?
Oh, sure, go ahead, Victoria.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, as a principal of the school, what a great complement to the curriculum of the Yearbook course. This extension has been with such valued practical applications for our students. And the passion of both Cheryl and Grace is very evident and contagious. So I just wanted to thank them both for making this initiative a reality.
Thank you, it's fun. I, like I said, I have a blast.
Yeah, thanks, I really, I've, I've loved everything about this program.
You can tell, you can tell, thanks, ladies and trustees. Do you have any questions or comments for Grace or Cheryl?
Frank.
Frank.
And what I want to address again, sort of a three-part question. First of all, are the students doing this on an individual basis? Secondly, how many students did we have in the program in the first semester or in its first year? And thirdly, were you able to still deliver the program through this COVID crisis?
I'll start with that, Grace. So it is integrated into the 12U English program. So all the students who are taking 12U English have been working on this as an add-on portion, not add-on, integrated part of the class. And so last semester, I think there was about 36 and this semester there are 17 additional kids. So all the kids taking the Grade 12 University Stream level would have been working on this project. I think that was part one. Part three in term, part three in terms of how we're managing with COVID. Grace and I have been dancing around a couple of different ideas and I think we've come up with something really solid. I'm super excited about it. Where we, because I obviously can't work on events right now because there aren't any. But I think we're going to put out a different challenge to them to write an editorial piece of some kind about, about things that they're trying that are new and different in this time period. And, and have them explore that from an editorial perspective as opposed from a news report perspective. And I think I missed the second question, but.
It was if, it is individual. So each student, when they choose their topic, they're actually competing against their peers, which is another good thing because realistically, when you get out into university and the workforce, you are competing against other people for that job. So this is kind of a gentle introduction where, you know, it's not as serious as competing for a job, but it still does introduce that bit of competitiveness of, well, I want my piece to be the one that's published, which is great.
Good.
And in the world of journalism, you're competing for that story.
Absolutely.
I didn't have to tell you that.
Okay, was there any other questions out there? Trustees, okay, well, no, thank you, ladies, that was very interesting. And we're looking forward to seeing articles in the minor news or on Q104. I think I've seen some in the past, so that's great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
We will move down to eight point three, the Student Trustee Report. So Claire and Julia, if you're ready with your reports.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
So, good evening, trustees.
Let's do our say.
Our leaders and system leaders, we hope everyone's students, their parents, staff.
Sorry for the interruption, we seem to have some background noise. I'm wondering if we can get everybody to mute their microphones who is not, who are not Julia or Claire. Thank you.
Should we start over or do we just continue?
If you wouldn't mind, it was really hard to hear, there was some background noise. Sorry to interrupt you guys, but that would be wonderful if you could.
Okay. So, good evening, trustees, Director of Education, Coordinators and System Leaders. I hope everyone is doing well despite of the difficulty that we are all facing. Students, their family and staff are trying their best to make light of being stuck at home.
The staff members of St. Thomas Aquinas have been trying their best to learn new platforms to provide the best platforms to provide the best they can for their students. Most teachers have been using Google Classroom, Brightspace, and Microsoft Teams to keep in contact with their students. Some students are comfortable with these platforms as they, as they have used them in the classroom. Others are working on adjusting to this unforeseen situation. Overall, everyone is doing what they can and are continuing to live their lives stuck at home.
Adding on to Julia, the resources that we use, such as Google Classroom, Microsoft Teams, and Brightspace are all powerful tools to aid our learning. Microsoft Teams is my personal favorite, and my classmates' favorites do. I use it for both my chemistry and religion class. I like it because it's the platform that relates closest to the classroom setting. Mr. H., our chemistry teacher, puts a lot of time in playing and exploring the app. And every day, he shows the school and new features of it. We can use Whiteboard, where he writes our notes. He changes his background into a school-like setting. He does the attendance using the same app and many more. I just really love it, and I'm sure my fellow students like it, too.
Keeping in touch with our fellow classmates has been very easy with the technology that has been put in front of us. We are constantly talking about the new platforms that we are using, strategies the teachers are using, and how much we miss each other. Many students understand what is happening but don't want it to be true. We all want our normal lives back. Many students have mixed feelings about our online classes.
I've also been messaging as many students as I can, asking them how they are with this situation, if they have any feedback, opinions, concerns, and questions in regards to the, to the distance learning. Most of the people that answered back are mostly from my grade, grade 12. The questions my fellow classmates are asking are mostly about the graduation and prom. Many are concerned about their marks, but I tried to respond to them by letting them know that the ministry assured the students that it won't affect our marks, and reminded them that the most important thing now is their mental wellness. The stress caused by the situation has been unreal, but students know that they'll, they can always reach out to their friends, family, and the supportive staff that we have in STA.
Everyone has a different learning style, which is making it hard for some to understand lessons and assignments. In the beginning, we were only supposed to be stuck for two weeks. I think everyone was excited to have a break. Now that absence has been extended, and people haven't been able to see their friends or have any face-to-face interaction, most people would be very happy to go back to our daily routine. Some teachers have structure and have set a schedule to keep the students' minds at ease. Many have also been trying their best not to assign too much work. However, some students have found that other teachers have been giving them a heavy workload and would like some consistency from class to cap, class to keep the stress level as low as possible. We all understand that this is a stressful time, and everyone is doing their best.
I am one of many students that was happy when there was no day or holidays, because this meant no school. No school means no homework, extended due dates, and a break from all the stress of school. But ironically, now, I kind of miss school so much. I miss the in-class lectures, people running in the hallway, and I also miss my friends and teachers. "I never thought I could miss school so much," a student said.
Prom is one of the most awaited events in our high school journey. Students get to dress up in fancy dresses and suits. According to my friends who graduated, they said, "It is what makes the last months of school so memorable." Many of grade 12 spent hundreds of dollars on their dresses. And so, of course, most of them are disappointed and sad that prom is canceled. But everyone is starting to understand that there is nothing we can do but to let things play out as God intended.
On behalf of all the students of St. Thomas Aquinas High School, we would like to say a big thank you to all of you who worked and continuing to work hard to support the students' learning. We are fully aware that our situation right now is not only challenging for our students, but also for the staff. We would like to let you know that all your efforts are very much appreciated. And we would like to end your report by reminding everyone that in this difficult time, sometimes the best thing we can do is to not think or obsess about it. Just breathe and have faith in God that all will work out for the best. Stay safe and be healthy, and trust God's plans for us. Thank you.
Wow, that's powerful. You're wise beyond your years, both of you. Wow. Good luck. It, it will be okay, and we will get through this. And I'm sorry, it's tough. It's so tough for you guys. Any comments from any of the trustees?
I'm not a trustee, Madam Chair, but am I able to comment?
I guess, yes.
If, if it's not appropriate, I don't, okay. I just wanted to say that it's really wonderful to see our students. The staff really miss our students, including both of you. And Julia, please know that the grade 12s are holding a special place in our hearts, and as are all of our students, but particularly the grade 12s, because we know that there's a lot of anxiety about missing, potentially missing year-end events. And we're trying to plan some special things in the event that we don't return by the year's end. So please know that our hearts are with all of you.
Thank you.
Yes, you are in all our thoughts. And there will be something somehow. It, it'll just be different. As long as we all stay healthy.
Yeah.
Yeah. Once again, thank you. That was like the best. That was like, that was a real hole in my heart. I feel bad for you guys. I really feel bad. Okay, we'll move down to number 10, policy governance. 10.1, approval of the minutes. We have the recommendation, please, Trina.
That the report of the Policy Governance Committee meeting of March 3, 2020 be approved as presented.
Moved by, Frank, was that Frank?
Yes.
Okay, seconded by.
Mike.
Mike. Any opposed? That carries. Recommendation again, Trina, on page 17.
That the report of the Policy Governance Committee meeting of April 7, 2020 be approved as presented.
Moved by.
I'll move that, Paul.
Paul Landry, seconded by. Jeff. Hi. Jeff? Oh, can't hear him. Ann?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Any opposed? That carries. Okay, 10.2, policy. Board job description, which is found on page 21. And Derek, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And through you, the board job description is largely derived from the Education Act and describes the role of the trustee, the role of the board as a collection of trustees to be the ones that are ultimately responsible in guiding student faith development, student well-being, and student academic achievement. And I'm very proud to work with this group of trustees who, who do more than live up to that board, board job description. I'd also like to note, during this time of crisis, the leadership, the wisdom, the experience has been so appreciated, because I realize that often you don't have the answers. We're waiting on, you know, information during, for COVID-19, for example, and, but you still have many people that are contacting you through email, through phone, or maybe, of course, two meters away at the grocery store when you're there for your, your weekly or bi-week or bimonthly trips there. But it is most appreciated. So at this time, Madam Chair, I, I do not recommend any changes to that board job description except to acknowledge how, you know, you're, you're certainly serving with tremendous dignity, leadership, and wisdom through a time nobody could have anticipated and nobody certainly signed up for. So you go beyond the board job description, and, and indeed that you do individually and collectively. So anyway, I present that with, with no recommended changes at this time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Derek. May I have the recommendation, please, Trina?
That the board approve the review of policy number two, board job description with no revisions at this time.
Moved by.
Ann.
And sorry, I seconded. I didn't get that.
Vaughn.
Vaughn, okay. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries. 10.2.2, policy number 15, pupil accommodation review. Derek, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as you are all aware, there is still a moratorium on any school closures boundary, boundary reviews in the province of Ontario. Our current policy is in line with the last revision to pupil accommodation reviews. And so at this time, I do not recommend any changes. However, if anything comes down from the ministry, we will be reviewing that as to when the moratorium may be, may be lifted. So, Madam Chair, if there's any questions, I'd be pleased to take them. Otherwise, the recommendation is, is approval with no changes.
Were there any questions from any of the trustees? No? Okay, then they have the recommendation, please, Trina.
That the board approve the review of policy number 15, pupil accommodation review with no revisions at this time.
Okay, moved by Frank Bastoni, seconded by Jeff.
Mike. That was Mike, Madam Chair.
Oh, okay, Mike. Thank you. Any, anyone opposed? Hearing none, that carries. 10.2.3, the Northwestern Ontario Student Services Consortium, the transportation policy. Allison Smith.
Hi, I'm here. I don't really have much more to comment on the policy. I did bring it forward to the board, I believe it was January, and the proposed revisions were passed at the policy meeting for the Transportation Consortium in February. So the recommendation would be to accept the revisions of the policy as presented. That is in your board book. If you do have any questions, I would be happy to answer them as well. I'm not sure if Paul Landry has anything else to comment, as he's the trustee rep for our board for the Transportation Consortium.
No, I have nothing to, to add to it. It was greatly done, and good to see it's finished.
And just on a side note, I just want to thank Dan Ridgway and his team. Dan Ridgway is the new general manager for the Transportation Consortium, and they've done an exceptional job through everything this year. Dan is the new manager, and him and his team have taken on a lot of new hurdles this year between labor relations and school closures. So the work that they've done has been very well, and the communication between all the boards has been outstanding. So just a public thank you to them and their team for the work they've done.
Thank you, Allison and Paul, for the work you do with the consortium. So may I have the recommendation, please, Trina?
That the board accept the revisions to the Northwestern Ontario Student Services Consortium 001 transportation policy as presented.
Moved by.
I'll move that, Paul.
Paul Landry, seconded by.
Vaughn.
Jeff White. Oh, yeah, I see Jeff put his hand up. Okay. Any opposed? That carries. Okay, 10.3 personnel, 10.3.1, the resignation of Gerard Dufresne. Mike Favreau?
Yes.
You have some words?
I will, Madam Chair. I'm glad to. Gerard began his career with us at the Canora Catholic District School Board way back in October of 1981, 31 years ago. He started in the carpentry maintenance shop, and then as his responsibilities increased, he became the position of the facility supervisor, including the overseeing the construction of Pope John Paul's school and other significant projects. In 2018, Gerard became the operations supervisor, responsible for all the day-to-day operations of the maintenance department and the staff, and that is the position he is retiring from now. Throughout the school board's expansion, the ongoing capital project, and in particular, the construction of the Canora campus, Gerard has been an instrumental leader, ensuring projects come to proper and on-time fruition. Gerard is an intense critical thinker, and we know that his decisions are always made in the best interest of the school throughout the system. Gerard's unique multipurpose talent in the trades, and especially his fine carpentry skills, can be found in various buildings throughout our system. Often, when something couldn't be bought or fit just right, you could count on Gerard to build it just perfectly. Gerard is always willing to lend a hand where needed, and his pride in his work, his integrity, honesty, and ability are known to all of us. Gerard will be remembered as a walking operating manual. For the operational components of the Canora Catholic District School Board, he knew them all. He will be missed. We want to thank Gerard for his commitment to the Catholic education, and we wish him and his wife Lori a long and healthy and prosperous retirement, and many, many years of happiness. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mike, for those words. He will be missed. May I please have the recommendation? Trina.
That the Board of Trustees accept the resignation of Gerard Dufresne for the purpose of retirement effective September 30, 2020 with regret.
I move so, Madam Chair.
I'll second that, Frank.
Okay. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries.
I look forward to seeing Gerard more often on the pickleball courts once we're able to access them.
Okay. 10.3.2, the resignation of Marie Landine. Paul Landry. Can I get you a few things about Marie?
Yes, I will. Marie began her teaching career at Canora Catholic District School Board as an occasional teacher in 1990. In 1994, she became a permanent teacher at Mount Carmel School. Since that time, she has shared her gifts and passion in many of our schools. She was a longstanding member of the teaching staff at Our Lady of the Valley School, where staff and students alike grew to admire her fun, loving personality and enthusiasm for teaching. When the school closed, she transitioned with staff to the opening of Pope John Paul II School. She then served several years in a titerant role at Ecole Marguerite Saint, Marguerite Bourgeois, and most recently, Pope John Paul II as a junior teacher. Marie followed her dedication to her faith to the state Marguerite Bourgeois, where she taught religious education for four years. During her time in this passion, position, she was able to share her love for our Catholic faith and God's love for us with all students. She connected Catholic and non-Catholic families to the church and to a deeper understanding of our faith. She started a weekly prayer time before school, which students looked forward to each week. Her passion for her faith was contagious at SMB, where she was truly adored by staff, students, and parents. Marie returned to Pope John Paul II to finish her career. Marie has been a grade six teacher for the last two years. She brings so much heart to everything she does, and her contributions to the school are not limited to the classroom. Marie has been a wonderful faith leader to all the students. Marie has been a wonderful faith leader to all the students and staff. She has led masses, prayer services, helped children to prepare for sacraments in collaboration with her church, taught the entire school songs and dances, and has been a caring adult to many students. Marie makes it cool to share love and faith in God. She has entered out with a Grade Six student to BB Camp every spring and has felt the emotion of a proud parent at each graduation. We wish, we want to wish Marie so much love and joy in her retirement. In her next chapter, she will be able to spend time with her ever-growing family, some of whom lovingly call her Mimi. We look forward to seeing Marie at Pope John Paul II to drop off her grandchildren and hopefully as a supply teacher after retirement, Marie.
Thank you, Paul, for those words.
I'll make.
Yeah, recommendation, please, Trina?
That the Board of Trustees accept the resignation of Marie Lundine for the purpose of retirement effective June 30th, 2020, with regret.
I'll move that.
Yeah. Paul, seconded by.
I'll second it.
And, and opposed? Hearing none?
Or all opposed?
I know. That carries. Okay, so 10.7 Negotiations, 10.7.1 Labor Relations Update.
Madam Chair, I'll step out and I'll await a text message from Derek to come back in.
Um, yes, yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Derek, if I could get you to go ahead, please?
I will. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. As you're aware, the Ontario Council of Education Workers, the Council of Trustees Associations, which are comprised of the Ontario Catholic School Trustees Association and the Ontario Public School Boards Association, and the Crown, have worked together to arrive at an agreement that is up for ratification. The details will be available after ratification to the public, and we thank all of the partners that were involved in that. Although we don't have any OSSTF employees, that is the last major union group to arrive at a central agreement. Local negotiations will begin or will continue across the province, including in Canora Catholic. Soon, the processes will begin there. Given that the vast majority of the articles and issues have already been dealt with at the, with the central agreements, we anticipate there'll be a much shorter time period for the local agreements to come to fruition and come to ratification to this table. So, Madam Chair, I'd be pleased to answer any questions on labor relations at this point, prior to going to the next item, which is the ratification proposal.
Okay, trustees, any questions?
None.
No? It looks like they're all good. Derek, if you'd like to continue with 10.7.2, The Ratification of Central Terms.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. And as mentioned, the Ontario Catholic School Trustees Association is recommending ratification, but will await the decisions of the various Catholic School Board trustees. And I would ask, Madam Chair, through you, if Trina would convey that, the recommendation.
Okay. Trina, please?
That the Canora Catholic District School Board ratify the central terms contained within the Memorandum of Settlement and Attached Appendices, April 4th, 2020, made between the Ontario Council of Education Workers and the Council of Trustees Association, comprised of the Ontario Catholic School Trustees Association, and that the Ontario Public School Boards Association, and agreed to by the Crown. Further, that the approval of the ratification of the central terms be reported to the Ontario Catholic School Trustees Association.
Moved by.
I'll move that, Paul.
Paul Landry?
I'll second that, Mike.
Mike Favreau?
Michael seconded.
Yeah, Michael?
Yes.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries. Okay. Derek, can someone text Frank? Do they have them?
I will do that right away.
And then we'll just wait till...
He shouldn't be able to join us momentarily. I had that queued up, ready to go, so he's got it now.
Okay, good. He couldn't go very far, so.
No, none of us can.
Okay.
Hello again.
Okay, now we continue. 10.811, COVID nineteen update.
And thank you, Madam Chair. I'm pleased to provide a bit of an update to the Board of Trustees and to the public. As you're aware, schools in Ontario are closed for students and staff in the community up until May 4th. The Premier indicated earlier last week that students would not be returning on the 4th, but a date for student return was not and has not to date been announced by the Minister of Education. One can surmise that we will not be returning prior to May 12th, as we're also under state of emergency orders in the province of Ontario, although that hasn't been clarified either. So the next step for what might be Phase Four of school closures or a return to school will be announced by the Minister of Education in the coming days. The Minister of Education does have the power to execute this closure order, and the closure order, according to the law, has to have an end date, although the Minister reserves the right to extend that end date at a date closer to the announced span. And so as soon as that information becomes available, we will be sending it via our usual means of communication to our students, to our families, to our community. With respect to the COVID-19 update, I'd like to highlight some of the many actions that I, that we have taken at Canora Catholic to ensure continuity of learning and well-being of all during this time. I'm very proud of the efforts of staff. All of our staff, all of our students, all of our families have undertaken things, great and small, to help each other, to lend a helping hand, and it's been quite inspiring. Here are some examples, Madam Chair. All teachers were in contact with students and families during the initial two-week period of closure by telephone, email, or via a virtual learning environment such as Google Classroom, Microsoft Teams, or Desire to Learn Bright Space. During these communications between teachers and families, teachers conducted an audit with respect to student and family needs to ensure continuity of learning. Any needed resources were collated by each school principal and vice principal, and an access to equipment and supplies plan was implemented at each school based on needs. This included pickup or delivery of needed physical resources, which is continuing on an ongoing-as-needed basis. Canora Catholic promoted the ministry's Learn at Home portal to all staff, students, families and the community. The Board emailed information across the system, called parents via School Messenger, promoted the site via social media, and set up a dedicated site on the Board's website. The Board established a communications protocol before March break to communicate with family, staff and system partners with updates about the COVID-19 pandemic and the impact on students, schools and families. This communications plan included a dedicated website, documented updates, frequently asked questions, emails, School Messenger voicemail messages and social media posts. These communications included information from the Northwestern Health Unit, the Ministry of Education and our local bishop. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, we have been in close communication with many of our partners, including, of course, our students and families, but the Northwestern Health Unit has been amazing. We have regular meetings with our Chief Medical Officer of Health and, and the health staff across the Northwestern Health Unit, and they have been absolutely amazing in supporting us in keeping everyone safe. So I can't commend them enough and thank them for these one-on-one meetings that we do have with them to look at any particular issues or questions that we have at Canora Catholic that we can convey, then the answers to our students, our staff and our parents and community. On March 25th, I hosted a school closure meeting and question-and-answer session with all Canora Catholic teachers and principals to prepare for Phase Two of Learn at Home with teacher-led learning. This was an interactive session to share best practices and collaborate. On April 1st and 2nd, I hosted Microsoft Teams live events for all Canora Catholic staff and families in the community. I provided an address on the current situation, and participants were able to ask questions. Over 400 people participated in the live events, and over 150 questions were responded to. These events were recorded and available on the Board's YouTube channel, and later posted to social media and emailed to all staff and parents with instructions on how parents and staff can continue to ask questions. Media partners were also in attendance and reported on the events for the larger community. In addition, this was highlighted provincially as a best practice with, with the Ontario Catholic School Trustees Association. Between March 30th and April 7th, the Directors' Department released daily updates and communications to all staff about the evolving COVID-19 situation. And this, this, these updates do continue on an as-needed basis. When we receive the latest from the Minister of Education, these daily updates will continue. The Board's Instructional Services Department have been amazing in providing training and established best practices in preparation for Phase Two, and eventually Phase Three, if that is, if that comes to pass, of teacher-led learning at home. The department also established an internal resource center for staff to share instructions and best practices, and given the plethora of instructions and resources, the Instructional Services Department has done an amazing job in organizing those, because if you look at that site, there are so many excellent resources that it could become overwhelming if it wasn't for the excellent organization of these resources. Truly one-stop shopping for our educators. The weeks prior to April 5th, in particular, the Instructional Services Department also established online resources for families in the area of numeracy, literacy, special education and faith formation to support the ministry's Learn at Home portal and provide additional resources and supports for students, staff and families. And this continues, and we're continually adding resources. And although this is formally done by our Instructional Services Department, so many individual and groups of employees have all contributed to, and many of these unsolicited, and so we thank so many people for adding their own expertise. Canora Catholic also established a Learn at Home website and resource center for families, students and staff with frequently asked questions and instructions about Phase Two of Learn at Home, and similar actions will occur for Phase Three if that comes to pass. We've been also working, of course, with our very own Board of Trustees, and our trustees have adapted seamlessly to this virtual learning, this virtual board meeting environment, meeting environment. And likewise, Special Education Advisory Committee meetings have already happened in this, in this environment, and our Catholic Parent Involvement Committee meeting is upcoming too, which will also happen using these formats. We've partnered with the Northwestern Health Unit and the Rotary Club of Canora's Nutrition on Weekends program to help provide food to families and school supplies that relied on the school's nutrition programs. To date, this program is providing food for over 150 children. The program is also expanding, as I mentioned, to offer learning supply packages for students. And I'd be remiss if I didn't name Marnie Buffett and so many individual volunteers, staff, students, community members, and the partnership we have with our various partners in the community, including our co-terminist school boards. A Canora Catholic teacher, Megan Baker, I'll give her a shout out, is also using the Board's 3D printers to print ear savers and face shields for local medical professionals. These were donated to the local hospital, ambulance, paramedic base. They continue to be produced and distributed. So those 3D printers are definitely going full bore at Megan's household, and so we thank her for that. Gym mats, chairs, tables and audiovisual carts were loaned and delivered to the city to help set up a shelter at the local community center for people who are homeless. And we thank Greg and many other, Paul White, Gerard, and many other staff members, our custodial staff, principals, vice principals, for helping make that happen. An inventory of our personal protective equipment was sent in centrally as requested, and thanks to Allison, Gerard, Greg, our custodial staff for making that happen. At this time of distance learning, we're very pleased to announce that His Eminence, Thomas Cardinal Collins, will be celebrating the Catholic Education Week Mass scheduled for Wednesday, May 6th, at 9:00 AM Central Daylight Time. All students, families, Board staff, trustees and the broader Catholic community are invited, and that information is going out via our communication channels. And this will be a virtual celebration of the Eucharist, and the link will be provided for everyone at the scheduled, before the scheduled time. And so we hope for as many people as possible to participate in solidarity with the educational, our educational partners across the province, students, staff, parents and community members. So we thank Cardinal Collins and the staff at the Archdiocese of Toronto for making this provincial virtual event possible. And thanks to Father Rudy and his technical helpers too, and Shaw Cable for broadcasting a recent mass that is available on YouTube, and we will also be adding that to our links on our Board websites, and including any future masses from Notre Dame or any of our local parishes in particular. Now that we have celebrated the Passion, Death and Resurrection of Jesus, as Catholic school boards, we begin to focus on the theme Curriculum and Activities Plan for Catholic Education Week. It begins on Sunday, May 3rd and concludes on Friday, May 8th. There's many programming materials available that will be modifying for at-home use, liturgies, reflections and class activities. Thanks so much to Dean and Mariette in particular, and many other staff members for promoting and sending out these, these materials. Of course, the Catholic Education Week theme for this year is Igniting Hope, and although our, the planning committee didn't plan for our current COVID-19 situation, igniting hope is just what we need more than ever. The learning environment and experience for students, of course, has been changed, and igniting hope is something that we certainly hold on to. This programming will truly help to ignite and sustain hope in our communities. All trustees and directors are reminded that all programming materials are online and can be downloaded, and it's from Good News for All, and that has been promoted on our websites. And there's additional prayer services that have been made available from the Catholic Education Week Committee. There's additional liturgical resources that can be used at home, and we greatly appreciate the efforts of all. And again, a big shout out to Mariette and Dean and all of our, all of our supporters. I had a conversation with Father Rudy. He, he lets us know, he is praying for all of us, and he's receiving many, many emails and phone calls and offering comfort to our community. He's very, he's also very proud of our Catholic educators who are doing so much to support our students and families. He's also so proud of our families and students who are working so hard to support each other. And so, Madam Chair, that is my report, and I'd be pleased to take any questions about COVID-19 and any associated effects on Canora Catholic.
Thank you, Derek. Trustees, any questions? Thank you, Derek. Trustees, any questions? Well, thank you very much. I know your workload has intensified and as well with the staff. It doesn't go unnoticed. We know you're doing your best in these different times. So, thank you very much for keeping all our students in a safe place, as safe as they can be and helping them with their education.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. 10.8.2, Canadian Catholic School Trustees Association, tunnies for tuition donation. Frank, if I could get you to please do a report on this since you spearheaded it for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sure that everyone has seen and read the news release that was distributed, so I won't read that, but I just want to follow up to it and just recognize the sacrifices that some families across this country and jurisdictions that are unfunded make to enable their children to attend Catholic schools. I want to thank everyone in our Canora Catholic family that contributed in any way to enable us to send in in excess of $4,700 to CCSTA for tunnies for tuition. Special acknowledgement and recognition, of course, to Mr. Tom Schura for his significant personal donation. And we all know that Catholic education is a gift and we are blessed to be able to share this gift with families less fortunate than ours. So, I'll leave it at that, Madam Chair. Thank you, everyone, for your involvement and look forward to continuing this effort to assist those families that are less fortunate than us. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. 10.8.3, Special Education Advisory Committee Report. Anne Sweetie, please.
Yeah, so I have two months to report on trustees, January and February, and I'll try to keep this brief. In our January meeting, Paul White did come to present on the board's improvement plan for student achievement and on our board's EQA results. And this is the same presentation as Paul gave to us earlier in the school year and the information was requested by the CAC committee. And then the only other person to report was Joelle Willett from Firefly and she told us that an applied behavioral analyst started work January 13th in the Dryden office and there is still one position vacant. The Ontario Autism Program will be offering HANNON training for clients who are diagnosed but still on the waiting list. And this applies to children who are seven and younger. And for information, the HANNON training fosters social, language and early literacy skills for preschool children through the use of responsive interaction strategies. Joelle went on to tell us that the SNAP program, Stop Now and Plan, started in Red Lake and once clients have come forward, groups will be offered to older and younger girls, older and younger boys. And our own Sarah Peiser teamed up with Amanda Brennan, who is the psychometrist for Firefly, to learn about autism spectrum disorder screening tools to use with students, staff and families to aid in the referral process. And then the meeting of February 21st, Derek was there in place of our coordinator and he did tell us that he had attended the Regional CAC Committee Meeting in Thunder Bay on January 15th. And some of the topics on the agenda was Jordan's principle, who we are familiar with, Jordan's principle. The Geneva Center implementation of their modules. And for information, the Geneva Center is a nonprofit service in Toronto. It offers resources to empower individuals with autism spectrum disorder and their families to fully participate in their communities. Also on the agenda was the Learning Consortium Modules for Learning for All and the intersection between special education and the Human Rights Code. And Derek also gave us an update on the special education audit conducted by our regional auditor on January 23rd, looking at a sample of ID placement and review committee. And our board did very well with just a few recommendations from the auditor and thanks to Andrea Batters and her team. The CAC committee did look at another training module, number three, which is the meeting process. Joelle Willett from Firefly shared a copy of the Child and Community Resources available for regional training opportunities for both parents and professionals working in the area of autism spectrum disorder. Registration is on a first-come basis and for all of the sessions, a priority will be given to families that are not currently receiving services. Diane Vanderzant is a member-at-large with the committee and she is also a member of the Accessibility Committee and reported in a recent audit that was done at PJP to school and she did say that one of the biggest issues was the size and shortage of available parking at the school. But I'm sure we will probably hear more about the accessibility inspections. And that's CAC for two months.
Thank you, Anne, for your reports. Any questions from any of the trustees? You're very thorough. It's great. I guess you're meeting for virtual now, so yeah.
Yeah, we did have a virtual meeting and then the next meeting will be... Oh, we do have another one coming up on May 19th. It should have been in Red Lake. It is and will remain in conjunction with the board meeting, which is also that evening.
Great, thank you. Okay, that'll bring us down to number 11 of the whole. Can I have the recommendation, please, Trina?
That the board accept the report of the committee of the whole and all recommendations contained therein.
Move by.
Frank?
Frank, seconded by.
Vaughn?
Vaughn? Any opposed? Hearing none? That carries. 12, 13. Future meetings of the board will be virtual. There's dates. And that brings us down to all trustee travel has been canceled right now. School council meetings are either to be determined or canceled.
Madam Chair, just a quick question for Point of Order.
Sorry, yes, go ahead.
Should I have made the recommendation for the committee of the whole since I stepped up for a part of it?
That's fine. That's okay. That's okay.
All right. Thank you.
It's okay. Good, thank you. Number 16, adjournment. Can I have the recommendation, please?
That the meeting adjourned at 8:39 PM.
I'll move that, Paul.
Paul Landry's moving and seconded by.
I'll second.
And Sweetie, any opposed? That carries. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Night, all. Thanks, everybody. Great job.
Thank you.